...to order for November 19, 2012. Our agenda is visitors, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlights, Foxborough High School late night and overnight student travel, food services update, district report card, TERFs up, field project update with Mrs. Pennelli, Mr. Youkner, and Mr. Scollins will be joining us, FY 13 monthly budget statement, other matters, and then a journal. Any visitors? Okay, approval of minutes.
I don't have any problem with approval, but were the other two on here? Can we hold them?
That's probably a good idea.
Good idea.
Okay.
Teaching and learning highlights, professional development for new teacher evaluation system. Baseline Edge.
I will turn this right over to Dr. Rotos.
All right. Well, with professional development that takes place for teachers, we just had on November 6th our staff development day, and we thought it was a good time to talk a little bit about the professional development that took place specifically in light of the new educator evaluation system that's here. Just to give those at home a little bit of context, Massachusetts has new regulations for teacher evaluation that have gone into effect for approximately 145 school districts this year. We're one of those as a Race to the Top district. Race to the Top funds was a federal grant that Massachusetts received, and as part of that grant, they had to devise a new evaluation system. And it's one that's very different from the evaluation system that we've had in the past. And specifically, it really is a question of looking at teaching and learning and looking at students' progress over time. So when someone might ask, well, why the change? Why did we need to make that change? It was really to enforce effective teaching and leaders, also to take into account student growth and achievement, and to promote teachers and leaders' growth and development over time. And this is a huge shift from what we've had because it's a difference in, as one example, principals in the evaluation process would go into teachers' classrooms maybe one to two times for a formal observation or evaluation, and now they're in there much more frequently, which is to provide feedback and coaching and to have really the important pieces, this collaborative dialogue that's taking place with teachers about students. And in order to really be able to manage this new model system, it's a five-step process, we wanted to have something like the students. You heard from Carrie Green at the last school committee meeting, some Web 2.0 tools that students are using and different software programs that they use. Well, we're not unlike them. We also are using technology tools to make our lives more efficient, productive, and at the same time, really make it a collaborative process so we can most importantly impact students in the classroom. Because we know that research says there's nothing more important than teaching and the teachers in the classroom. So we were looking for a solution, and that solution for us is Baseline Edge. That is a software web-based program. It is put out by Longleaf Solutions. But importantly, Baseline Edge, we trained all of our teachers on November 6th as part of our professional development day. And it was our principals and myself and Debbie that trained all of the teachers to implement this software program. So I think that one of the things that's really important is the importance of trust and collaboration. And having our own administrators and people train teachers, I think that helps with that collaboration to really show we are in this together because it is a huge shift from what we've had in the past. It's a big workload, to be quite honest, for the evaluator's standpoint, but it also puts onus on the educators to provide evidence towards four standards that we're looking at. So Baseline Edge, the software program, is basically electronic depository for all of the forms, all of the communication that takes place with teachers. Principals can use iPads if they wish to go in for observations and take that information and then give feedback very quickly to teachers. And they're able then to have that dialogue about what they're seeing in the classroom and the conversations about students and student learning over time. So it's a program that's allowed us to be efficient. It's a program that allows us to be collaborative, and we're able to take that workload in a sense where there's so many different steps along the way and put them in one place that's going to manage it over time. The training itself, we spent about an hour. The beginning of the model system, all of the teachers and myself and Debbie, all of us, as you know, we set our goals by a self-reflection process. And we put that into electronic forms and then can communicate back and forth based on those. Over time, as we're meeting, working to meet those goals and the observations that take place, we're able to collect evidence, artifacts, documents, and upload that into the system and to be able to have conversations back and forth regarding the different steps along the way of the process. But it is a tool that we use, and the most important part really is the communication and the dialogue that's taking place with teachers and those that come in to observe them in their classroom so we can impact students. Because the change really is teachers and student learning over time. So it was a great first start. You have glitches, you know, at different times, so I'm happy to say that we were able to launch that, and we're going to continue to support the teachers with the software side of it by having technical support sessions before and after school for any that want to come along, just as we do for students. But I really think it's going to be a great tool to promote dialogue and impact student learning and professional growth on teachers and students.
It's a new thing to learn, but it's basically like an online portfolio system so that teachers can upload their evidence and documentation to the same spot. So it allows everybody to see everything that's in there. So the big binder you were used to for my evaluation wouldn't be occurring for all of our employees. It's all an online system. So at some point in the near future, we should talk about whether, how we're going to use that for me, because I'm the only person in whose evaluators obviously aren't on staff. So that's the last, that will be the last pin to try to tie up. So we're on our way.
Mary Ann?
Yeah.
Question?
Big, big change.
It is.
Will there be any benefit amongst the teachers in sharing information, just how they succeed where somebody else might not be and the difference in the class and the climate?
Yes, that through their goals, they have to report on the progress toward their goals, which is in there. But yes, we do have to increase collaboration time for teachers. I think that we're trying to make sure everybody's up and running with the basic features of the system, but other features that are included in the system would be collaboration, not just with our teachers in Foxborough, but actually uploading examples of best practices for students or for teaching with all users of this across the country. So that eventually will be almost like a place to mine, and they already have a feature that's a research feature. So if one of your goals was around challenging students or differentiating instruction, or it could be having students work in, you know, groups, that you can go right through the same system and find the current research in that area to help you decide which direction to go in. So it's got a lot of other features that we plan to use, but for right now, it's how to use the system, what's the timeline, what does your portfolio look like, what are the tasks that are the to-dos in order, you know, to get through the years successfully with the evaluation being completed? You know, when you complete a task, how does your evaluator know about that? When the evaluator completes an observation or a walkthrough, how do they let you know about that with the system? So we're the logistics of management right now, but then we will, you know, hopefully be using that for more than we are.
When it comes to the high school, how many teachers would you have teaching ninth grade English or?
Well, the departments vote, seven or eight.
Seven or eight.
How many teach exactly ninth grade English? I can't say I have it all memorized.
I don't either yet. We're pretty close to nine, nine or 10 teachers within the department. So if there's four or five that are teaching freshman English, then that certainly is a collaboration. There's a lot of collaboration that does go on around the lunch table. What we're really looking to do is to be able to, which we are going to do, is see where else, how we can really subsidize that a bit.
And we have had over the last few years, a lot of collaboration around common assessments. So everybody's teaching Algebra I, for example, everybody teaching freshman English, or US History I, that they have a common assessment and they're looking at student work together. But we need collaboration around teaching practices. So that's, it's all about time, but that would be the next step that we're all asking for.
Best practices.
Yes.
It just amazes me how you're supposed to squeeze something new in all the time without extending the day. It's a huge effort on everybody's part to make it happen, make it work.
Yes. Eventually, when we, you know, the first year's, I think, hard for any new system. And since this is a new system, actually, you know, a national, you know, if you get Race to the Top money, it doesn't matter what state you are in, that the new evaluation system has to be implemented in Massachusetts. I think as usual, we're kind of one of the leaders in our state about how complex the system must be, and that's why we had to adopt or adapt by the end of the last school year. So we're in the best possible shape we can be in, but it's still year one. So we're learning as we go along and just keeping the feet moving forward.
Yep. I'm sure you will.
Have a great team.
It's also a good example, though, of some of the costs that we're running into in the district with technology. Last spring, when we were pushing with the, you know, all the educators to adopt this, this program didn't even exist, so we had no idea what the cost was going to be.
Oh, they didn't give it to us free?
Yeah.
Oh, it was one of those.
Shocking. But again, I think we've had a number of these come across the district in the last year where, as we advance our technology, we're now into higher licensing fees, higher software application costs, and it's not even to deal with what's in the classroom, but it's to deal with how we manage the system overall.
Yes, which tools. In fact, we've talked a lot at this table about the new data, student achievement data management system so we can have everything in one place. And we're, we have a product that we're working on to make it what we need, but that is also going to be tied to the teacher evaluation tool because in this state, eventually, within the next couple of years, the teacher evaluations will be tied to data around student achievement. So we have to make that more accessible to teachers. Right now, it's pretty accessible to administrators. We have it in different places. Sometimes it's in paper, sometimes it's in a spreadsheet, could be in a shared folder. But we don't have one powerful data warehouse type system to store it all up and operating yet. So that's one of our goals for this year is to get that tied up so one duck is in order and the next duck is quacking.
I think people need to understand, though, that a lot of the stuff that is mandated, you know, when it comes to us building a budget and trying to look forward and trying to figure out where we're going, how we have to get there and what we need to get there. I guess I take exception of the fact that there are so many things that are mandated and nobody backs it up with anything. And I think to some degree, that's unconscionable because if they walk through the classrooms, if they walked in everybody else's shoes and realized what we had to pay for day in and day out, then I don't mind holding us to a higher standard. I don't mind us doing the work, but I think there comes a time and you have to draw a line in the sand and say, look, you know, it's great that you're mandating this, but you need to back it up with something. And I think maybe some of the other communities wouldn't be going after this kicking and screaming if they didn't have something, because you've got to get the money from someplace.
Right. And that continues to be a problem. There's another new, we call them the unfunded mandates, but there's another huge one that's just come out about training for teachers for students whose first language is not English. And, you know, a little bit scary weekend with the email from the Department of Ed because they're requiring us to train so many teachers and it's multiple, multiple hours. And again, it's unfunded. So we just finished a wave that's lasted almost 10 years where they said we had to train in these areas and using their system, using their training modules. So we trained, I would say, the number of teachers that we had to to pass our reviews because we are what's called a low incidence district. But now they just threw that baby out with the bathwater, and we're starting with a new type of training, which I don't understand. So just to tell you a little bit about how frustrating it is, and the Department of Ed, because this new evaluation system is required, a lot of districts over the summer, since this is all very new, started saying the same thing, that you're requiring us to do X number of hours of training for teachers, which is good and not helping. So at the end of, I guess the beginning of September, they came up with a thing that said they would refund or help out minimum amount of money, districts for this required training. We're still working on this, but when we asked to have it, because we did all our training in August, which is on time, you're supposed to do the training before school opens so the teachers are prepared. So I guess we're one of the few districts that actually did it on time, and we're still, I would say, pulling the train into the station at all the, at all the right stops and the right time. And they told us that we weren't eligible because the notification came out from the Department of Ed and we had already completed our training.
So here we have punished for doing something.
Right, for doing on time. And they have a limited number of approved trainers, and we had used Teachers 21, you know, Dr. John Doria, who's been here. So we used one of their approved trainers. We had more than the hours required training that they required, and they said, oops, that you had already done it, so that's starting today.
So we should have gotten a bonus. We should have gotten a bonus for doing it on time.
I think I agree.
I think I would.
So that's just an example of how frustrating it can be. So we're still working on whether we can be reimbursed for the expenses we incurred in August, but so far.
Isn't this something so ridiculous?
That is really ironic.
So I guess it pays to drag your feet because then they'll supplement you.
It's the first time ever that they actually offered any money, but we were a little bit shocked too.
It's like you're doing the right thing and you're trying to be prepared.
We're going to punish you for it.
And organized.
And timely.
I just think that this is such.
We missed it by two weeks.
I think it's such, this is such an important conversation to have because again, I think when people, as we're starting our budget season, you know, and we're looking at the concrete, specific things that, you know, people are going to say, well, why do you need this or what do you, you know, it's all of these other things. Right now, there's probably unanticipated, you know, costs of these mandates that we don't even know about. Like you said, we didn't know about this. And it's just, it keeps evolving. And I think that, you know, people have to understand that this does cost money, and as much as we can, we fight for the reimbursements and we go back and we make the arguments, but there are things that are around the corner that we just don't know about.
Right, because this time last year, when we were looking at this year's budget, we didn't know we were going to be required to do three days worth of training from the approved provider in August because the system, we hadn't even seen the system yet. We just heard about it, and they started talking about what it's probably going to contain. And at this point, we were waiting for the models to come out, which they started to come out in November, December last year. So it's going to be.
It's our challenge, that's for sure. And you have the comments? Okay, Foxborough High School late night and overnight student travel. Mrs. Smires, pack up to the guest table. And as you know, annually, you approve any travel that requires students to be out late or overnight or out of state.
So you do have a list, I believe, which is a little bit shorter than last year's when we were reviewing, but this is an off-year for our exchanges. So those are trips, our exchange to France and our exchange to Spain are not included in on this because this is not a year of travel for us to be traveling there. So what we do have is the possibility of our cheerleaders qualifying at some point for a national, for the national competition, of which we do not yet know the place, but that is always a possibility of that, so we do like to put that on.
What would the date be for that, approximate, do you know? It's usually February.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's usually like late January and into February for that. Our varsity basketball team has done a ton of fundraising and is going to be heading to Florida.
Is it boys or girls?
It's the boys.
Boys.
And they'll be heading to Florida the 27th through January 1st, where they will be playing with other teams, doing clinics, and also able to enjoy some of the sights and sounds of Orlando and Disney World. So they're excited about that. And our track team with Dartmouth College in January. We have a trip to London that is going out through the English department over February break. They're currently scheduled, I believe, the 15th is a Friday, but again, they could wind up being shifted, and that could go a day or two in either direction. It just happens sometimes when you're using the travel companies. So just, those are the approximate dates, and those are the dates that they have right now. Those are not firm. Hopefully, those will be firm within about the next month or so. We have the annual Student Council Conference in Hyannis that'll be taking place March 6th through the 8th. That's a Wednesday through a Friday. The All-State Music Festival at the Seaport Hotel in Boston. Our Festival of Music that our music department will be traveling to Philadelphia and Gettysburg in February, excuse me, in April. And if we qualify, the essentially Ellington Festival in New York City in May.
Okay. So you need a recommendation?
So we're requesting a vote.
I recommend that we approve the list as presented.
I'll second. All in favor? Thank you.
That was hard.
Thank you.
Back to parent conferences.
I thought they were all here for the school committee meeting.
But they were. We've got it out there. The cameras are off. Food services update.
If you don't mind, can we switch? I think, if I'm not mistaken, Allison's going to be here shortly.
Oh, great.
Next one.
Nobody objects? We will do the district report card. Sure, okay. So as you know, it's been part of our strategic plan, which was approved by the school committee in May of 2011, to our objective number four in the strategic plan says to maintain strong support for public education within the town of Foxborough. As you know, the strategic planning group, which consisted of community business members as well as staff members, had come up with three-year goals under each of the broad objectives, and then specific strategies and action steps related to those goals. So under objective four, to maintain strong support for public education, one of the three-year goals was to develop strategy for promoting Foxborough Public Schools, more from like an information viewpoint, so people know a little bit more about the schools and are more familiar with what actually is offered in the schools and what we look like. So specifically, a strategy is outlined in the strategic plan related to the goal and objective is to create a district report card to share regularly with stakeholders. So I think the intent of the committee was to have something to share annually with the community. And so what we did was, we actually modeled the format after Medfield's, and we liked the way that they presented the format. So what we have for you tonight is really a draft of what we think it could look like, and don't expect a vote tonight. Actually, we met with Bruce, who can't be here tonight, Bruce Gardner, and Tina Bellinger, who also can't be here tonight. I guess we should extend condolences to her loss of her grandmother. And, you know, when he came in, he said, I can't be at the meeting because he's away, traveling this week, but he had some really good suggestions for formatting. And for example, when you open up, we had lots of choices with the formatting, do we want it to flip up or do we want it to open up? So one of the suggestions he had that, other than the cover letter that I wrote, that this really becomes a booklet, the way we chose to do it. And so the point to this is, there are some data points in my cover letter that if people throw away the letter but keep the booklet, that you would want to have some of those small tidbits of information in the booklet. So that was really good feedback. So if people are going to not keep the letter but keep the booklet, then we need to move some of the things in the letter and make that a little bit short and more like just an introduction to what this concept is, explain a little bit about what the district report card is, and take some of the facts and figures and put them in here. So what I hope to do tonight is to get your feedback on it, both the content and the format, and we will come back at the next school committee meeting with a more improved version. This is the first time that we have attempted anything like this. School's never had a district report card before, so it's really important that we take our time and get some input from you and come back with another version. I do like the booklet. I like Bruce's idea. I think that this might be too much for people to read, and that if you can take some of that and put it in the content, I would go for sure.
I thought that was a good.
Yeah. I think that's.
The whole point of the formatting, just to give you a bit of thought, we actually, Amy and I worked on this a lot and over and over because what we wanted to do was create a booklet, not a report. We want people to have their eyes go to what they're interested in. You don't have to read it in order necessarily. There's different places you can go to look for information, and this would be mailed out to the folks in the community. So examples of things that we probably will move into the booklet would be our per people expenditure, what our total budget is, the Boston Magazine notice, you know, the list of, being on the list of best public schools in 2011, the best high schools in 2012, those kinds of tidbits. The objectives from the strategic plan should be in there, and our community partnerships probably should be in there too.
We're going to hang on with me instead of you. I'm going to put some of that information in here. I think it might be helpful to put like maybe all of that on one side and maybe, because your eyes go to the district overview, you know, the clubs and activities, maybe put more of the justice, the data about, you know, the whole district kind of on one page. And then move the other clubs and activities, childcare to another page, you know, depending upon how you word it. But I just think that, because I, for me, I would say, oh, okay, I want to look at that information, let's say, and now it's all in one place, and I don't have to go kind of looking for it. And then I'm going to look at, okay, then the different areas like clubs and activities, childcare, what, you know, what applies to me? And I don't know whether you'd make maybe the technology highlights a little bit smaller to fit in.
Right.
You know?
We probably would.
Or even the MCAS information. I like how you did the high school. Again, it's like enclosed in that area. Yeah, I mean, I like it.
So we're considering this a starting point discussion?
I think it's really good, but you asked, so that's why.
Oh, no, you want to ask. That's why I could. It's a starting point discussion.
I don't want to minimize or diminish your.
We went through many renditions.
We did, and we said, let's just consider this a starting point because there's so many different ways you could do it, and we obviously didn't have another model to follow.
I love the front too, because I just think, again, the school, again, school administration, that kind of information, people are just going to want to know, and of course, just the mission and the vision. Yeah, I really like that.
I kind of like when you have to hunt for things because it makes you read the whole thing. When you clump things in one place, you tend to just read the thing that belongs to you per se. So if you break things up, sometimes it makes people read the whole thing, and you really want them to be involved with the whole process. So there's some advantages and disadvantages to clumping things together and then people ignoring something and then saying, oh, I didn't know about that while it was in there. You know, they just didn't hone in on it. So by sometimes breaking things up, you kind of force people to look, take a look at the whole thing.
So obviously, if you think of anything after today, feel free to let us know, and we'll come back to the next meeting with a different version, new and improved, and we'll go from there. This is great, though. This is really nice. I think the community should be pleased. I think the community should be pleased.
Oh, definitely. And I think, you know, for people who were familiar with the strategic plan, either by sitting on the, on the group that developed it or by hearing about it, this is a concrete way of letting them know we are, the strategic plan, unlike, I'll just have to say the last one, isn't something that's just sitting into a wall. This is something we do look back on. We know that this was one of the things we had to do, that we committed to doing this fall. So we are continuing to move ahead with implementing the strategic plan as developed by the community group.
All right. Thanks for your time. Allison has arrived, so this might be a good time. We were ahead of schedule, but we wanted to wait for you so you could come up with Bill.
Come on up to the guest table. So for people who may not have watched the other meeting, Allison Johnson is our food service director this year. New team members welcome Allison. Hello, can you see everyone soon? So between you and Bill, we, I'm sure the public will be happy to know what's new in food service so far.
Yeah, I wanted to start with Allison, kind of giving an update of the changes, and then I'm going to do a little bit of the financial side of where we've come in the last couple of months. There's been a number of things that have gone on, obviously, on the food side, so I should start with that.
It's definitely been a busy couple of months. I'm sure you guys have heard, school lunch has been a hot topic in the news across the country, here included, of course. Definitely got some good things going for us, though. We got a salad bar here at the high school. We started that at the beginning of October. Definitely getting a lot of great feedback from that, teachers and students included. It's been filled to the brim with stuff from Oakdale Farm every week. We've been mixing up the salad bar. Every day, we change up pretty much what goes out there. There's a lot of fresh stuff in there. We've got local carrots, local lettuce, cucumbers, cherry tomatoes, a little bit different every week, but it's been a lot of fun, and the kids are really happy about it. I know Joe's been enjoying it a lot behind us. He's always got the best-looking plate out of the whole school. Loves his peas. We did get a grant, so we'll be getting blenders to start a smoothie bar.
Oh, it did come through?
Yeah, we'll be getting a check tomorrow, so I'll be able to place that order as soon as I have that check in my hand.
Nice.
We'll be starting smoothies right away. That I'm the most excited about. That I'm the most excited about.
Good. Lots of discussion about portion size, so we can't say it too often. That is the federal government. Had a nice chat with some students actually down here last week about it.
That's right.
It is something to protest, perhaps, so I think the whole country is, so we'll see what happens with that.
Absolutely. Actually, got another grant in the mail, or that I found out about today. So I filled out another grant for salad bars for the other four schools. I had originally, when we applied for the smoothie blenders for the high school, we applied for grant money for the other schools as well to get salad bars. The other ones didn't go through yet, but we can reapply in January. But luckily, I just found another grant that's specifically for salad bars. So I filled that out today. I got that in the mail, Debbie signed it. So, they didn't say exactly when, we'll find out, but I'm assuming maybe another month or so, hopefully before the other grant has another deadline, so I'll know what we can write for, for the next round for the dairy council grants. Maybe money to redo some of the cafeterias, maybe some more equipment. Lots of options, honestly. The middle school has been doing really well. Having our chef down there, she's really pushing some great stuff on the kids. The assistant principals, Mr. Donella, and Mr. Creedon, and Sue Abrams, have been really, really helpful in promoting our new foods. They've been standing there at the mics every lunch, you know, encouraging the kids to try stuff. When we had our Thanksgiving dinner last week, they were yelling over the mics, "If you guys got chicken patties today, you made a big mistake, buddy. There's some great food out there." So, it's been really helping. The support is really, really essential right now. And the kids listen to them. They get excited to hear over the microphone what's going to be new today, what they get to try today. And they're getting used to the fact that they can come up to the serving lines and say, "Can I just try a sample? I brought my lunch, but this looks cool, and I'd like to try it." And they're really getting used to that, and it's becoming a really good atmosphere there at the middle school. Definitely got your kids that aren't maybe never going to try anything while they're there, but we're definitely working on them, one by one, we're getting them. I've been there a bunch of times during lunch, going around and trying to get the kids to sample them, you know, just myself, and getting some feedback from the kids. And they're happy, you know. The kids definitely say that they have a hard time with the portion size at the high school and the middle school, but they are excited about a lot of this new stuff they're getting to try. So, it has been a really great couple of months, honestly, amongst all the chaos. The elementary schools, we did some taste testing at all the open houses. The kids got to try yogurt parfaits. They got to try out our hummus and our sun butter that we offer every day, and all the different fruits and vegetables that we put out, so the parents could see what the lunches look like. It was a way for us, too, to get a lot of the kids used to trying yogurt with different types of fruit or cereal on top, because we give them yogurt all the time, but don't necessarily know to mix things together. The little kids like their things separated, nothing can touch. At the open house, they were able to take, they had choices of different fruits and different cereals that they could put on their yogurt, and they were really excited to try new things. And now we're doing a lot more yogurt, and we put yogurt parfaits on as a main menu item. So, things are growing really well.
I have to say, we went to the, last Thursday, you had the adults could pay to have the Thanksgiving...
Yes.
Dinner at school, so that the parents and the community could try some of the things that are being whipped up in the cafeteria now. And it was really wonderful and fresh. And just to help explain the complexity of it, I was just really impressed that both the mashed potatoes and the stuffing were made gluten-free. So, if you think about it, it's not just healthy portion size, don't worry about it, it's also those types of things. So, you know, I certainly enjoyed it, a lot of food at my plate. But I think that it's just really, you know, all the regulations are really difficult to adhere to, and we know that portion's a problem. So, but I think that was a really creative way to have some parents experience what we really are serving in the food, in the school cafeterias, as opposed to, you know, a description you might hear at home. So, I'm going to open it up, because this is the time, I'm sure this is the topic you want to comment on, William, Megan, what your friends are saying. You don't have to, you know, own it yourself.
You don't have to throw anybody under the bus.
We do know portion is a problem with the breads, especially the grains and the meat, the protein.
Like she said, everyone loves a salad bar. It's a big hit with everyone.
Great.
I think that after they have the salad bar, I haven't really heard anybody complaining about the portion size. Just talking about how good the salad bar is.
Which helps with the small portion, because you can load it up as much as you want on the salad. So that's definitely helping to offset it. We had a discussion with some students the other day about the pizza, because we, I think you discovered, as I did in that conversation, that some kids liked the old type of dough, whatever it was. And then there was a day that you tried a new one, and the kids seemed to like it. So you switched to that, and now some kids like the old one. So, we don't know where we're going with the pizza.
It's been the same with all the grade levels. We tried out a couple of different kinds of pizza, and it's been kind of split half and half. So it's been hard to choose which one do we do. So, most of the managers have just decided they're going to do a little bit of both and let the kids have the choice between the two.
So why don't you have one of the pizza?
I actually haven't had the pizza. I've just been doing the salad bar.
Okay. Good answer.
He's back, though.
Oh, yeah, he's not toting his lunch anymore. All right.
One of the other things on the smoothie, and Allison discussed this with me the other day, and I think it's a great idea, is we have a lot of kids that do come early and that are hungry in the morning and stuff. And the thing about the smoothie bar is, basically, you can do a nice fruit yogurt, you know, drink that they can grab quickly and go off to a classroom or something like that, or even drink down as they're going to the hallway. Because they're all carrying things, as it is. They're carrying Dr. Dunn's coffee, or, you know, whatever they're finding there. So I think from that perspective, it might be another way of kind of introducing a little bit better product into the school, and also maybe, you know, give some kids a little boost first thing in the morning when they get here that they're never necessarily getting. I think the, actually, one of the other things, I've been doing comparisons, obviously, on the financial side, but one of the things I did notice when I looked at the counts, is that the teacher count of eating the food has increased. It's up actually about 25%. So that, to me, is a big, you know, telling sign that basically, not only are they trying it, but now we're getting the teachers who typically kind of stayed away from it that are kind of moving in. One of the things I found interesting with the salad bar, and she bought a beautiful salad bar after here, but, and I thought it was very large. But the reality is, it actually, for the high school, needs to be bigger for the amount of the types of things that you're trying to get, you know, quantity or selection in there. So what we're hoping is that we'll be able to get another grant and move this one to the middle school, which obviously would need a little bit less, and make a bigger one in here into the high school and make it work that way. And again, a lot of things that we're trying here in the high school, the intent is to push down. So once we get it working and understand how the process works, to move it down. And one more aside before I get into the number side of it, is that one of the things we have found, and I think you guys were great last year in supporting when we brought in Edith. Again, a little bit different for food districts in bringing somebody who has, you know, a culinary background. And actually, I think between Allison and Edith working together, really changing and having real menus that are based on new recipes, and for soups and everything else like that, it's been very beneficial to us as a district, because we're trying things to try to figure out how to get the kids to enjoy the different foods that they may not normally like. And I think, again, what we have found, and what we need to figure out a way to expand on, is while she's done a great job at the Ahearn, we have four other buildings that are getting her expertise. So, it's something that Allison and I have been talking about, and that, you know, I'll be bringing back to you at some point. But some way, I want to be able to get her into those other schools, to be able to train the cooks and the assistants, to be able to also advance them even further. They did some work together this summer, but it's hard once the school actually starts. So, and again, I think the Ahearn's come a long way. Their staff really seems to be doing a great job and really moving forward with the menus and stuff like that. So we just need to kind of figure out how to leverage that further as we move forward.
May I just add something? I just wanted to say that the Ahearn staff is definitely getting the most benefit, because they're getting all the hands-on training. And we're finding that we can do all the outside-of-school training we want to, an hour here, an hour there. But what we really need is someone to be there with the staff, day-to-day, every day, showing them how to do that stuff, do these recipes hands-on. It's not just about writing recipes and asking them to do it, or teaching them knife skills. It's about working every single day with the staff. And they have come so far in the last couple of months. I'm extremely impressed with the skills that they've acquired just in two and a half months. And I'd love to see that for the other four schools as well.
Yeah, I mean, and the few that did get a chance to participate in the Thanksgiving thing, I mean, that was the whole staff doing it. That's not just Edith doing it.
Exactly.
So, again, they've all had to kind of come forward with her and, you know, go through a process that was very different than what they've had in the past.
It was good.
The Thanksgiving dinner was delicious. I'm ready for next year.
Awesome. We're starting to plan for Christmas now, so we don't have to wait too long.
Oh, good.
On the financial side, or on actually the number side of this, what we're finding is not dissimilar, although it's improved since we put in the salad bar in the high school, so we hope it will actually improve when we get to the middle school and maybe even down to the elementary, is that, you know, we were running about 17% behind for the volume of meals that we were cooking or serving in September. We're down to about 14% behind in October. The reason we're not seeing it financially is fortunately, we did make the adjustment of last year to go up a quarter. And basically, that's keeping us almost even. We're about $3,000 behind last year's total revenue. So I think from that perspective, you know, we're okay. We do realize that we're spending for those fewer meals, we're still spending about the same cost in our labor. Because even though, just like in a classroom, you lose one student, you know, lose a teacher, well, if you lose just a few people eating in the meal, you still have all of the prep work and all of the serving and everything else that has to go along with it. So, our costs are unfortunately staying consistent to last year. On the labor side, they're staying a little bit higher, obviously, on the product side, because now we're buying much healthier, you know, product that way. So, as it stands right now, we're kind of holding our own, but we are burning some money that we've had in reserves in the past, and it's really kind of the money that we'd like to have for our equipment. So, again, hoping that this whole thing can turn, and we can get the students back into, you know, more and more comfortable with buying stuff. And again, that's why Allison's attempt with the smoothie bar and the salad bar, and whatever else we can introduce that will help bring the students back into buying, will make a huge difference on the financial side of this. But again, I was somewhat encouraged that at least our overall revenues are, you know, somewhat maintained. If we can just, if we can build back another couple percent each month, we'll do fairly well with that side of it. Other than that, I think that's about what I have at this point. I think, again, it's been some great strides relative to the whole food service side of it. And again, I think part of the issue will come with the students over time. Allison had a comment from one of her parents on a call that came in, actually asked for some of the recipes, because the kids were actually trying stuff that she couldn't get them to eat at home.
That's a great form of plattery. You get the recipes, it's awesome.
So, again, I think that's...
What kind of a challenge for parents, when they do find something?
Absolutely.
Would you think about posting them on recipes? Or do you do that already, post recipes on the website?
We can do that.
I'm just wondering if other, you know, parents are experiencing that. Would it be giving away any, like, secrets?
I don't know, you might have to talk to our chef about that. She might have different feelings than I do.
I think it is challenging, though. I know that the students who say they're not buying as much, it's because of how much they're getting. So if that could, you know, it's not, you know, for some kids, it might be that they don't try new things. And we've all had children who are more reluctant to try new things than some other children. But, you know, hypothetically, I'm saying. But, you know, I think that that's the dual challenge that we face with the new federal regulations, is how do you get students to experiment a little bit more, while at the same time, they're going to be a little bit cautious to do it. And at the other time, even the things that they normally would have eaten, the portions are small, so they'd rather bring the bad ones from home. So I think we've got a couple of challenges all swirling around the same, at the same time. So, I think we'll come out of it okay.
Allison, you see much in the way of waste at this point, in trying to figure out what to buy and what not to buy, and who's going to buy it at the end of the week?
Not too bad, honestly. Maybe the first couple of weeks a little bit, but, no, not now. I think the managers have got a good handle on what they need to produce and what's going to go. Yeah, it hasn't been that...
You know, especially when you're trying things new, it's like, oh my God, what if they don't eat it? It's kind of like home, but...
Everyone smiles with the little kids, and we try out new bean recipes. And not all that's going to go down, you know that for sure. You know, the goal is just to get one bite down. That's considered success with the little kids, so... But no, in general, things have been really good in terms of waste.
Well, having raised five kids, I can honestly tell you that there is hope for parents and their kids, because my worst eater is now my biggest health nut.
Awesome.
And it's amazing, it's like, why did you torture me when you were growing up? I can't believe what you're eating now, you know. It is amazing how they do finally grow up and get it. It's a hassle, you know, when you talk, when you made the comment about, you know, kids not letting their food touch each other. I know some adults that are like that, so...
That's true.
You know, some things don't change, but... It is amazing, the things they go through. But, you know, if we don't introduce them to things, then they never learn.
That's part of our job here, is to just keep introducing the kids to these things. And eventually, one day, they're going to acquire the taste bud for it. Eventually, they're going to try it, and eventually, they're going to like it. We're here to teach them.
If we all live long enough, we'll see it. No, it is amazing, but you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Very impressive. It's great. And our new to kids food system, management system's going really well, so...
Yeah.
Always things to, to learn, that's another thing. But it's another example of a tool to help us manage one aspect of our operations a little bit more efficiently, get some better data around it, so...
Yeah, that's one of the things that's making it a little bit tough. We don't have the same level of data to compare ourselves backwards, because obviously, that was all done manually before. And now, actually, from the manager's point of view, one of the beauties of the point-of-sale registers is the second they're done with the point-of-sale, it's created the data. So we're seeing, we're collecting, you know, in how many meals we've done in a day. We're seeing, you know, our reports for sales tax, you know, which we have to charge a meals tax on, adult meals and stuff, is done or ready for you. It's really kind of very impressive. I think one of the other things that Allison and I were looking at today was the pre-pays. And obviously, we just, just did the email blast that went out last Friday to kind of explain to parents that it's there, how to get to it, and how to start to sign up. But in the month of September, we had about $4,000 that came in through the online payments for their kids. Yeah. October. And so far, that's right from the start. And we didn't actually start that until probably a little bit around mid-October, as far as that goes, about $4,000. So far, we're ready, we had about $5,000 in November. So the parents are starting to get to it and use it. And, again, what's nice is the child comes in, punches in their code, and basically is seamless. But when you really watch, from the register point of view, when you watch the kids go through, it's much faster. Because one of the other complaints we were getting, especially on the elementary level and middle school, is that they don't have enough time to eat. So if you're holding them up in a line, and it takes, you know, X amount of time to get through, well, now that's a fraction of the time. I watched the elementary, which you could think is a challenge, and it was as fast as the kids could get to the register, they were going right through. You know, one registered person handling two lines coming in at the same time. So that's a huge improvement. And again...
Wow, that's great.
You know, try to give the, try to give the kids more time to actually eat, so they're not rushing and throwing stuff away, to your point, because they don't have time to eat.
That to me seemed seamless and fluid. I watched it a couple, to the elementary schools, and before it was, you know, the crumpled-up money, the orders, the dime, where to go, you know, all the end, the trace, the, you know, the kids are backed up in line. And so this is just, they just, you know, the good old days. It's really...
Brings back fond memories. Fond memories.
Bringing back memories when I was the snack mom at the elementary.
Now they just punch in a number, and it's boom, their picture comes up, the person clicks, "Yes, that's you," and they go off.
I think the kids think they have an ATM card, so that's all they...
It's true. I feel like adults, and they all said, the first thing, they're like, "Oh, we're like adults now, so cool."
Next thing, they're going to want some cash back.
Yeah, right.
College fund.
There you go.
Just go to the bank and get money. That's their favorite line.
Challenges.
Any other questions, Allison, or...
The lunch was wonderful.
Thank you. Glad you enjoyed it.
Do you have your December date yet?
You can be sure to see more gluten-free things, too. I have celiac myself, I can't have gluten, so that's why the managers work really hard to create things that I can eat, so that I can have lunch every day, too. So all the kids with, it's been helpful for the kids, too, because we obviously have a lot of kids with allergies, kids with celiac especially. They're like, oh, I made this, it's got, I can't have sugar either, I'm prediabetic, so I do completely no refined sugar. So, they have been, the high school's been making potato salad with mayonnaise and honey instead of using, I mean, not mayonnaise, excuse me, sour cream and honey, or yogurt and honey instead of using mayonnaise, making broccoli salad with honey and yogurt instead of using mayonnaise. So, they're coming up with all kinds of new recipes and crazy ideas to be able to work around all the allergies. It's been a good experience for all of us.
Great.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. It was nice to see everyone tonight.
Thank you for coming. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you, too. Happy Thanksgiving.
Should we consider moving to the monthly budget? Because we're ahead of time and Mr. Scholins is not yet here.
Sure.
We'll be right along. That's a great idea.
Tell me, could we just get Brandon a call? Oh, you did? It's my fault. Did he check back?
No, it's kind of a challenge.
You've got to go to the window.
Okay, and in, as of the November 16th date, as you know, we present on a, try to present on a monthly basis, once we get going, up until October, there's really not a lot to report. But, at this point in the year, we're starting to see some of the trends that are coming forward on us. The issues really, on the payroll side, so far are positive, mostly driven by three paternity leaves. So, you know, when you have that, obviously, you have some expense saving, or some labor savings there that we deal with, and also a little bit in some of the other ancillary payroll areas. So, you know, $32,000 on a surplus at this point, it's still really early in the year to get excited about it, but at least it's on the positive side of the factor. On the expense side, we're about $26,000 to the good, and most of that, if not all of it, is actually generated by the fact that our grants or other resources are looking a little higher than what we had originally programmed for. And again, they came in around $46,000, which was fortunate over what we had budgeted for. We do have about $20,000 in expenses. A number of these are those software expenses I've talked about that we're going to have to build into the budgets going forward. So, we have chewed up $20,000 of the 46, just in trying to cover the costs that were above what we had budgeted for this year. So, overall, it's a positive report, $58,000 as our surplus. It's way too early to get into the utilities or any of the things of that nature. Although, I will say, up to this point, we are right on budget with those, so obviously the next three months are the critical months. We have had some challenges in the heating areas in the past, where kind of a difference in philosophy, where what Michael Leary liked to do was really drop the temperature in the buildings almost as far down as you could without freezing them. And, well, you know, but it is a good thing, because obviously-
No, it just sounded funny when you said it.
I know, yeah, I did.
And he would do that during the weekends and nights when people weren't here, and then bring up the temperature in the mornings.
Yeah.
But the problem with that, typically in large buildings, is it takes too long to bring the building back up. So, what we're experimenting with, and actually, Tony, the new operations manager, it was his idea, and I tend to agree with him because of being in the building side in the past, we're only going to drop it about 15 to 20 degrees down, and that way, we don't have to recycle up as high. However, if you're not cycling up as high, you're not running your boilers as long to get it back up. So, we'll know in the month of November, we'll use it as our test month right now to see if it's true. But the big advantage we've seen so far is over at the Ahern, where the gyms used to get so cold and the teachers really didn't even want to have the classes in it, once the winter came in, have all set us, and it's been great. So, if we are running the cost up we think we're running right now, we should be in pretty good shape, and I think it's just a change kind of in philosophy, and we're trying. The other thing, Tony's been, he's been really, really researching this and going all around, and we're finding the Ahern's now 12, 13 years old from when we renovated it. And, obviously, when we did that, that was one of our first kind of advanced heating systems, which has been working phenomenally well, knock on wood. But typically, you know, there are valves that are in each classroom that control how the heat moves throughout the building, and they're electronic, so they do fail over time. And Tony's actually been researching all the way down to each classroom, which ones are failing, which ones are problems, and we're now replacing those. So, again, we can kind of keep as level of temperature throughout the entire building as possible. And again, I think that also will make a big difference in how you use your heating as well, so...
Now, the middle school's gas, right?
Both, all of our facilities are gas at this point.
Oh, okay. Is there anywhere we can look into the gas companies and whether or not they'll reimburse us for checking on these gauges and stuff?
They typically don't get into these, what we're talking about is an item that's about an $80 per unit item. Now, we do have 100 units or so, but they typically don't get into that level on their rebate process that typically you get into when you're doing a total rebuild or rehousing. It's a point to try, and I will-
Do they come in and do energy audits, like they do with the electric company and stuff?
Yeah.
And say, hey, if you do this and this, we'll give you this and this?
Yeah. And that's one of the things that's actually very, for me, is very effective because of Paul Jackson, kept very good records on all the heating uses, the gas uses, electric usage. So, now, as I'm moving forward, to be honest with you, I have a great track record. I know the number of thermers we've used, I know what our cost per term was, I know everything that way, so I can measure and say, okay, you know, obviously, the cost of gas is going up each year, but if you can keep your usage at a certain level, you know, all you have to equate for is the increase in the unit cost. And so, and the town does have contracts through 2015 on both gas and electricity, so we should be pretty level, assuming our usage stays the same. And again, last year was a fluke year with warm temperatures, so I would expect this year to be similar to 2011's winter, so, you know, 2010, 11 winter versus the last year.
It'd be interesting to see what this building does with the windows redone and the new system.
Well, this one, I would, I would really expect this one to mirror more closely the Ahern, which was significantly less, and that we budgeted.
I mean, it was just floating out the windows before, so, and the doors. So, I'm kind of hoping that we see a nice plus on this.
I would truly expect it. Again, the boilers and stuff we put in here are really high, and we really segmented the building down, so we can run the auditorium now with rooftop units separate from having to worry about running the big boilers down the other end of the building. So, we took areas as it moves differently.
Yeah.
And we changed how we actually do it, so...
You know, when you think about dropping it down so low, I know I'm all electric, and, you know, when they came in and did our NGR, they said, don't drop them down too far, because when you come home and you want to come in, you want to be comfortable, you turn them up to where you want them, and you get such a boost and a draw, you lose everything, so you're better off running on a little bit higher.
Well, and one of the big issues that people don't really understand, and when I built my house, I kind of was into the whole energy program, when things get cold, like this table gets cold, when you bring the heat back up, you still have to bring the temperature of this table back up.
Right.
It's going to radiate cool until it's back up to room temperature as well. So, it's not just the surface or the area that you're in, it's every, it's the floors, it's the walls, everything is radiating in that same pool. So, again, having to come up 15 or 20 degrees is a lot easier than coming up 35 degrees.
Yes.
And I think, again, if we're right, and we're going to, we're going to measure this very tightly and make sure where we think we are, if we have to drop it a little bit further, we'll drop it a little bit further. We see right now, we're able to keep this a lot closer to a comfort level quicker when the kids are coming in on school days. So, hopefully, that will stay the way it is. So, overall, I just, you know, look for a recommendation as far as approval, obviously, we know we make some transfers during the-
What do you transfer around specifically?
Most of the transfers at this point, we moved a little bit of money from our, into our tutoring line, we need a little bit more of that, signing the high school.
Can we wait, can we wait a minute, please?
Please do drop an email or drop a phone call, and I'm sure that the parent conference can be arranged through the telephone call that can take place. We do get conferences again tomorrow night. So, once again, thank you to all of our parents, and a huge thank you to all of our teachers for your time this evening. Have a good evening and drive safe.
Yeah, again, if you look in the detail sections, what you'll see is that we've taken some of the payroll savings and we've had to put it against the two technology licensing things that we've done, as well as that math tutoring side of it. And that's basically it at this point. And again, at the beginning of the year, wouldn't expect a lot of transfer movement, but those are the areas that, you know, obviously, we had to cover as we were moving, so...
Where are you looking at, Bill?
In each one of the different detail pages behind the summary.
Okay.
If you go down to, as an example, on the page with the Ahern, you'll see that there was $7,000.
Okay.
That was the Gale, the Gale expense we had put through.
At the end, it says transfer or lane change or whatever.
Right, right. Also, would be another $7,000 on the, on the high school side.
Yep. So, transfer to high school tutors, so you do store lane changes and transfer.
Right, right. And then on the, should be district-wide, yeah, district, technology-wise, that's the baseline edge for the '74, '78. So, that's where the, you know, it's those type of transfers that we'll do at this point, but we'll only do it once we know that we're locked in on those payroll issues, so...
So, what you need is approval for what you've done?
Correct.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the budget monthly statement that Bill presented.
A second. All in favor? 3-0-0. Bill, oftentimes, we suggest maybe just saving an extra January Monday in case we need extra time. We already have two scheduled on the 7th, and then the last, second, our second one is on the 28th. So, that would, would we want to maybe keep the 14th open, too, because the following Monday would be Martin Luther King Day?
Are we talking about to prepare for the FY14, about it?
Oh, yeah.
On the timeline? Okay. Yeah, we usually do-
We can also do a different night if we have to.
Right.
So, I mean, if you want people to just informally save the 14th, is what you're suggesting?
You think that might be a good idea?
It doesn't hurt, obviously, if they don't need it at that point, we'll be able to-
January 14th, my 14th, right.
On Jan, just, just say-
So, if we decide we need one.
If we need one.
But we do want the final vote to be on the 28th.
Right. And that's so close to the end, that's-
Well, we have to vote it by the end of the month, so that's-
You have to vote it anyway.
Right. But it falls at a nice date for it.
Do you like to go to other matters for a minute?
Yes, why don't we go to other matters? We'd like-
Okay.
One of the things related to what you were just talking about, Ms. Lloyd, is the budget
timeline, so under informational matters section, you can see, this is the budget timeline. Bill and I were able to meet with Randy Scholins and Kevin Pickles last Wednesday, just a few days ago, and this is the budget timeline that the town is putting out there for all of us. So, just to call your attention to a few things in there that relate to the committee, that a week from tomorrow, on the 27th, there's a review, the revenue forecast with the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the advisory committee. So, that's on a Tuesday night, the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. As you remember, last year, before that, we had an opportunity to go and listen to the revenue forecast as it is outlined out of town. That was, it's always helpful. So, that will be at 7:30 PM.
I know.
Is that going to be the only agenda item, or that's just going to be the one we're going to?
I don't know. I just know it's at 7:30.
Okay.
I think the papers, the Board of Selectmen's been a little busy lately with some other issues.
Okay.
I'm going to do two, like, my son.
Okay, 7:30 for us.
So, I would imagine they may have some others, but I know that this is on for 7:30.
I will not be able to be at that meeting, I'm going to be out of town.
Wendy will be posting it so that the committee can-
Posting it tomorrow to make sure that-
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we'll have to open the meeting?
Right.
And post it?
Exactly.
Didn't we, haven't we presented the budget and then had, and then voted on at the second meeting? I thought we had to do that in two.
We usually, for us, on our side, or this is their-
Our side. No, I'm talking about our side.
Okay. For our side, last year, what we did, which I believe is consistent with the prior years, is that we present the initial budget in the second meeting in December, which we would intend to do.
Yeah.
And then continue to discuss it in January. If you need the extra meeting on the 14th, you can have one, and then take the final vote.
And then present it, vote it, okay.
So, the, obviously, the revenue forecast is important. Bill and I have been meeting with the individual members of the subcommittee, which is Bruce and Katie, and this will be an important meeting next Tuesday, so that we're all aware of the town's view of the revenues that are expected coming in, which would certainly impact us, and then we'll go forward from there. So, we do plan to be able to meet this timeline, which is to have our budgets up to town hall, our budget up to town by the end of the first week of December, which we were able to do last year, and then have our presentation at our second meeting in December. So, if that is, if that budget timeline is acceptable to you, we'll just continue. I think it's worked in the past.
Yeah.
It's in keeping with the town requirements, whether, thanks. The other thing that I'd like to mention is that this is the year for contract negotiations with a few of our associations, so I will need to, if you are interested in serving on one of those. Typically, our smaller associations, the collective bargaining that we do, but occasionally, they do like that with school committee member present at the final meeting or two. So, this year, we have smaller associations, we are crossing guards, our food service workers, and our bus drivers, and the larger associations are our educational assistants and our teachers, our professional staff, we call it professional contract. So, we always have two school committee members and a teacher, collective bargaining team, and we usually have one or two in the educational assistance, so...
We're doing teachers again already?
Yes. It was only a two-year, and the last time, Dr. Martin was bargaining because of the economical situat, the economy situation, so they went with a two-year, and so we are starting.
When would that commence?
Well, typically, they send us a letter saying they're interested in starting, but usually, it's around January, end of January.
It'd be interesting with teachers, one.
You would?
I'll take it back to that time.
That's fine. Doesn't have to be tonight, let us know, and we would need, you know, a vote if we need to meet with educational assistants, and you can let me know, it doesn't have to be. Adam Chair, I guess-
Were there three altogether? Except the two?
I think it's-
Oh, oh, no, I'm sorry. I had groups.
I think it's two and two. Yes, the other, the other three typically, somebody, in the past, my understanding is, somebody has said, is that my, Wendy may know, that one school committee member say, I'd like to be available to meet with the bus drivers, but usually, we'll conduct it internally, and then they go to the final meeting.
Towards the end, yeah.
That's right. And assistants, I think, have been two.
I think we've had two in the other assistants. So, that's also a two-year contract. So, I would say, doesn't have to be tonight, so if you would let the chair know if you're interested, and then she can let me know.
I think one thing I'd like us to check on before we get into it, because I know they're getting into an issue or a problem, per se, on the town side. If you put two school committee members, are you forming a subcommittee? Do you have to post it? What's the ramifications of doing that? And I think we really should look into that before we start putting together too many people on committees.
Because some of the regulations have changed regarding that. Okay, Wendy can look into it.
Sure. Be careful of that, okay.
There hasn't been an issue in the past, though.
But it could be an issue now.
Okay.
So, I want us to make sure, because they ran into an issue with the Selectmen.
Oh, they did.
By putting two people on a committee and turning it into a subcommittee and whatever, trying to negotiate with the crafts app. So, I just want, you know, if it, if it's true for them, it could very well be true for us if we negotiate.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea, Martha.
So let's make sure.
I just wanted to clarify, because I know in the past.
I think ours have been posted in the past. Is that right?
A lot of us have been posted in the past, yes.
We had posted, but it is good to check.
But if you're going to go into negotiations, do you turn around and vote to go into executive session? We really have to be careful as to how we're doing this.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last thing, might as well finish all the matters. I'd be happy to. I'd love to take off his jacket. As you can see under other matters, we have, we are still in a partnership with the Foxborough Police Department in the Hockamoff Area YMCA, which we began about a year and a half ago. You can see the letter invitation about the community awareness forum for child sexual abuse prevention, which is a week from tonight, Monday, the 26th, 2012, from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock in the Ahern Middle School Auditorium. So this is a community event co-sponsored by the Hockamoff YMCA, the National Darkness Delight Program, Foxborough Public Schools, Police Department. And this first meeting, just to let people know, is a community awareness meeting to raise awareness in the community about issues related to that. We did have one a year and a half ago, which involved actually a few communities in the area. And then following this community awareness meeting, there will be specific trainings provided. We have already booked this room here, room 122, the large room with the, I call it the pit room. 122, for specific training and after-school, two sessions. And then there will be another session in the Ginty Room at the Public Safety Building for an evening. So we'll have two late afternoon and one evening for any member of the Foxborough community or anyone who's interested. It's a two-hour training specifically on how to recognize signs of child sexual abuse. So we had trained lots of our school department members a little over a year ago. They train all of the town hall and public agency folks and a few other people. So this has been a community, ongoing community event. I think it's even more pertinent now than it was a year ago. So there's the flyer about the community awareness forum a week from tonight. If anybody has any questions, they can call the school department or they can call the Foxborough Police Department or the Hockamoff Area YMCA. And that's all I have for other matters.
I guess we can move to Turf Sut Field Project Update. This is Penelope, Mr. Uggan, and Mr. Scholes.
So we invited Mr. Scholes to come tonight to explain the new, slightly changed proposal of funding of the turf field. This is the proposal that the school committee sponsored a warrant article for the December 11th town meeting. And since we decided to keep it on your agenda for each meeting, since it's an ongoing topic for you as a school committee and for us as a school department to sponsor that, along with the Turf Sut Committee in the community. So we invited Randy to come and explain it, and he kindly accepted our invitation. So thank you very much for giving up your Monday night.
Great, thanks for having me. Initially, we had proposed to fund the Turf Sut project with capacity within the operating budget. Given that, looking at our revenue forecast based on all the new recurring revenues that we had identified from, in essence, new growth taxes and unused levy from last year, it appeared that the funding, the revenue funding would be more than enough to not only cover the town hall included debt service, but also debt service for this project, the amount of money that was being looked for for this project, about one and a quarter million dollars. So the revenue looked, looked good and looked like it could handle it. And not much has changed with the revenue picture. But now there's been more time to look at the expense side of things, not just for next year, but going out for the next couple of years, for three more years. And when we now layer in the preliminary and estimated expenses for the next three years, that's operating budgets, salaries, expenses, and fixed costs, it appears that at this juncture, that the majority of all that revenue is going to be gobbled up by increases in estimated expenses. So it was great that the revenue was there to handle that, but I guess I wasn't anticipating about 25% to 30% of the growth in expenditures that now looks like that, you know, that we're, we're heading for. So given that, that we needed to change direction. And the first direction we needed to change was that there was no way, given that scenario, that we were going to be able to afford the debt service for the town hall project on an included debt basis at this point in time. So that, that is off the table at this point in time for now. But it did free up some opportunities for how to, how to fund and finance the turf field project. And in working with, with Bill, there's, in essence, the amount of funding that's needed is one and a quarter million dollars. And as you all know, or I'm sure you know, is approximately a million dollars expected to be a remainder in the high school capital project fund account. And those funds have always been available to this committee to use towards the renovation of existing assets on the high school property. And given the current plan for the artificial turf field and complex, that it is now geared towards a renovation of existing assets, the ball fields and the football practice field, it is within the four corners of the authorizing article at town meeting for this committee to affirm that, you know, that that's what, that's the intention to use those funds, similar to what was done for the parking lot or the paving of the parking, you know, around this complex. You know, that was something that was, was added on, but that was only because of the positive project management and the bid savings. But it still was within scope because it was renovation of existing assets. So because of the way that this project's being proposed, the turf field, it's a, it's a sports facilities, athletic facilities, and it's a renovation of existing athletic facilities. So it's, it's a similar, I mean, a very analogous situation. And so therefore, you know, that remainder of the high school capital project fund is available without further appropriation for this committee to, to, to use those funds for that purpose. In addition to that, obviously, there's another quarter million dollars of funding that's, that's required in addition to the donated services and the, and the grant, the grant funds. Actually, I think it's $200,000, actually, with the project, project estimate being refined a little bit. And so, you know, Bill has identified $75,000 within other school funds revolving account. And I've identified funds that we had identified previously for use in the capital plan, $125,000 in cash that we can, it's, it's coming from overlay surplus, which is an account for abatements and exemptions. And we typically, you know, scrape those out every year if there's anything left over from unused abatement overlay money. We scrape those over and we put those into the capital plan or other related operating. And so there was an intention always to use, use overlay monies for the upcoming capital cycle. So I'm recommending we use $125,000 from that. And with the $75,000 from the school overlay account and a million dollars from, from the high school capital project fund and all of the donated services and the grant, I think we're there.
And I think, you know, obviously, what, what the committee needs to do is two things. You supported the project based on a desire to have a full campus concept. At the time, we were supporting originally was based on what was known from a revenue point. Now we're asking you to consider, and the $75,000 I'm suggesting would be coming out of our building rental account. It's going to greatly reduce that because we also took $62,000 out of it last spring for the track, which while we haven't spent it on the track yet, we will this spring. It's out of our account. It's into the capital budget side of things. So this will, you know, obviously, I don't want to say wipe out the rental account, but it's going to get pretty low, you know, at this point. But it's, it's the only way, if in fact the committee wishes to move forward with this, that we would have an option to move forward because we need to make up the money to get to the end result. The other thing this article does, and this would be the handout that are similar that would be going out at town meeting, because it's at least my suggestion that what we're saying to the community is it's their right to vote on this, although they're only voting on $125,000.
But it'll make or break the project. So they are voting on it.
Well, it will make or break the project in a sense, but it will also be telling whether or not they're supporting the overall expenditure.
Well, that's, yeah.
So if they were to say no to that, even though we technically maybe could cut something else out and strip by and get the field itself in, I think that would be the wrong message. I think the community really is looking, if they, if they agree to this, that's fine. If they don't agree to this, then they've spoken. And unfortunately, I think that is where we are with the project.
And personally, I don't have a problem with that. I think it, it's to our advantage to present it to the public and let them make their decision. It is their money. It is their school system. It's their town. It's, and I think that's the way it's always been and that's the way it should be. And I think it'll send us a message one way or the other. I think anybody who has walked through this building, who's watched this project evolve and the things that we've been able to do that we didn't think we could do because of what we thought were going to be the cost to begin with, I think we've done a solid job of putting this place back together again. And I think to stop now would be, I don't know, short-sighted on our side. I don't think the intention, I know, living here as long as I have, never in a million years did I think that the school would never be whole. And it's not whole. It's a three-quarter high school because we don't have a field here. And, you know, I, I think sometimes we sit back and say, well, we can't, we can't do it. And then five years down the line, it's going to cost us three times as much money. So I think sometimes you do have to put one foot forward and start a project. I think it kind of catches on after that. Maybe, you know, we need more support to finish it, obviously. But I think, you know, Yankee ingenuity, we can figure this out. But you got to start someplace. And I think by, you know, the appropriation of the overlay surplus and putting it before the town, then we'll know how they really feel about it. You can always tell everybody, you can get anything you want at town meeting, just get your people there. So this will be a test of who wants what and how much you want to finish this high school. I know we've done our part here as a committee to try and put the school back together. We did it, done it with the Ahern School. You know, and the problem is, is you can't allow buildings to deteriorate. And we didn't throw this high school away. We didn't ask for a new high school. We just asked for the money to be able to fix it because it needed to be fixed at this point. So this is a way of making it whole. So I, I think it's a great way of doing it. And then we'll have our answer once and for all. Are you for it or are you against it? If you're against it, then whatever money we have left over goes someplace else.
I think just because the funding plan has shifted doesn't mean that we would want to take a different approach.
No.
So this started as a community project, obviously supported by the schools and the school committee, but it remains a community, school joint project. So we, you know, we do believe in our conversations that it should go forward as a community vote at the, at the December town meeting and see what the will. And also to Martha's point, that this is phase one, which is, so I, I think people might be saying, well, what's changed here? The funding plan has changed, but phase one has not changed. So it's the turf field, the fencing, the lighting, and the repositioning of the baseball and softball fields to the back of the building. So that's still the same. So it's just the funding approach really that's changed, but we don't want to change the approach to approval, you know, from approval at town meeting to some other plan. The other thing is we're going to need, if this is approved, we're going to need that community support to go forward in the coming years, whatever that is, with the other phases. So I think that's really important. The one question I have, Randy, that I think people will ask, having visited the PTOs with members of the Turf Sut Group, there was, one of the things I legitimately will say, I'm still a little bit confused about is, there was some idea of the money left from the high school and the 20-year, it had to be something with 20 years. Has that changed? Because that's the one remaining question I have in my head. What's changed about that?
No, that hasn't changed at all. That's, you're referencing the law in terms of reappropriation of funds remaining from a capital project that, where we're talking about bond proceeds that are remaining. So specifically, the high school project was bonded under a specific Massachusetts general law statute. And it's a 20-year purpose statute. Everything that's bonded for in the municipal world is bonded under a statute that gives the authority to bond for it, and it gives the bond, bondable purpose life. And so the bondable purpose life for the money that we borrowed for this building was 20-year purpose life. To construct athletic facilities, which is what we're talking about with the turf field, that is 15-year purpose life under the Mass General Law statutes. So the, the issue that we had if the, when the field was being discussed as being located in an area that was not a sports complex, so in essence, it was a building of a new asset, that created the issue where it was not within the four corners of the warrant article that authorizes project. And then it was discussed, well, we could just reappropriate the funds that are left over to the project. And that's where the problem comes in, is that it's forbidden by law to reappropriate bond funds for, for a certain purpose life to a lesser purpose life. Those funds have to be reappropriated for a similar purpose life or higher. So that's why we, in the past, we've done that. When we had, for this building here, we had some leftover money from the Joint Public Safety Building Project, 20-year purpose life. We reappropriated $50,000, I believe, to this project. Same thing, we had a few dollars left in, I think it was the Ahern project. We rolled that forward to the Public Safety Building Project. Those are all 20-year purpose lives. Now we're talking about a 15-year purpose. So, so the nuance here is that although the funds can't be reappropriated because of that law, because the, the project as proposed here is a renovation of existing asset in this, in the, within the four corners of the authorizing article, the funds can be used, authorized by this committee. I think, you know, this has to be, I believe, at the meeting with the CIP committee.
Yep.
Oh, I, okay. So the original proposal that was larger and included a track and other amenities that went into the town property, that is not within the, that was not within the four corners?
Exactly. Right, that, that part.
Or if we put it someplace else?
If we put it in the back, it didn't work. Or if we put it over the Ahern, it didn't work.
Because it's on an existing field, it meets the criteria?
Yes.
And supersedes whatever this 15-year life.
Well, you're not, you're not reappropriating the funds. So you're not, there's no vote that's taken. If there was a vote that was taken, it cannot be reappropriated because you're going from 20-year purpose life to 15-year. Or because you're operating within the, the four corners of the warrant article that authorizes project, renovation of existing assets. Again, that's why I use the analogy of the parking lot. I mean, that was, that's a renovation of existing assets. So that fits, and it's the same, it's renovation of athletic facilities.
So if this plan were to put it back behind the high school or over the, you wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking about this as a funding possibility?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for that clarification.
I just felt like I, you know, I was sitting here going, wait a minute. I guess I still do have a piece I don't understand.
The key word is renovating. So because you're moving these fields and putting them out there and renovate, it falls within them?
And also consistent with what we did with the Ahern project. At the end, we had money left over at the Ahern. We had a problem with the track, with bleachers and with the field. And we used some of the money to address all three of those things under the Ahern project. Given some of those, knocking on wood, in the old days, we were fortunate to get the state to reimburse us on a little bit. So we're in the original scope, but sat on the property, so therefore qualified as a renovation.
So basically, the existing fields allow the money to be qualified to be used in the manner that you just described.
Exactly. You're renovating existing athletic facilities with new athletic facilities.
Okay. I, you know, of course, it has to go to town meeting. I mean, absolutely, you know, that's a given. And I, I, one question I do have, though, is about the building rental revolving account. So just, and I don't know if you have the data in front of you, Bill, but, so this is going to, oh, you do, of course you do. So it's going to bring down, obviously, the balance there. What, you know, we build this up slowly. This has been over years that this building rental has gotten to the amount that it's at.
Yeah. We do use, I mean, you know, we have, as you know, we have a number of revolving accounts. The, over the last few years, one of the biggest ones we had was in the tuition side, and that was because of the spoke program. When it closed, there was a very large balance that came over to the schools. Over the last two or three years, in your budgets, you've actually been using very large chunks of that, $250,000, $300,000. And so we're at a point right now where if we were to go one more year, we would pretty much wipe out that revolving account, which has been our single largest one. So what we did instead was we were trying to now manage where we can maybe get a couple of years out so the impact to the town is much lower. But we do have, we do have a number of revolving accounts. What we try to keep is enough to make sure that we have a cushion that if we had a bad year, whether it's in the athletic side, you know, or even with replacement on books and stuff like that, that they all basically have just enough of a cushion so that we can make it through that year and then go on to the next year. In the, and we do use, just so you know, on the building rental fund, we do use a portion of that to offset our expenses on an annual basis. So we are renting it on an annual basis. We're bringing in just under $80,000 with all the rentals we do across the district for everything. But as an example, last year, we spent $109,000. So we spent more than what we brought into it because we had a number of these pocket things that we were trying to fix. This will probably bring the, that revolver down to about $20,000 because, again, we spent $62,000 on the track or we've reserved that to the CIP, and we'd be spending another $75,000. So it will be the leanest that particular count has been. But, you know, what I guess, the way I look at it, I'm not looking to increase rates or anything else that's in that area. I just think, to your point, we'll just have to build it back up. But if it's truly something this committee feels is the asset that you want, it's, it's the right source of funds to use, I think, to try to get it there. And again, I think Randy's been very creative on his side as well. You know, we couldn't come up with the $200,000, which was not the intent initially from our side either.
I just wanted clarification of that for people at home, too, so that they understand because we do use these revolving accounts to offset our budget. And I think it certainly fits the, fits the mode for this revenue.
And we have to be careful what we use them for because there are stipulations on each of the revolving accounts. You just can't say, well, okay, we're going to wipe out this one. You just, you can't do that. So, you know, and in the past, unfortunately or fortunately, we never used them and they became cumbersome. I guess that's the best word for it. There's a lot of money sitting there that really was not.
It's not a bad thing.
Well, it wasn't a bad thing, but, you know, there were probably things seriously that we did without that if we had known.
Right, yes.
You know, I, I don't ever want to look back and say, you know, a child went without something because we didn't put a particular program. You lose a year for a child, you can't get it back. So I think.
The point is not to just keep building and building. The point is to utilize that money for, you know, sanctioned programs.
So I just don't, I don't know.
Because of the way the warrant is written right now, do we have to take a formal vote tonight?
Oh, absolutely. For a couple of reasons, I would say. First of all, to show that you are behind in support of this, you are basically telling us that you have, you're in agreement with the $75,000. You're in agreement with the 125 as the request on the warrant itself. And, you know, so from all those points, you, this is still, you know, under your school committee's purview. And so if you're in, you know, favor, it will move forward to the other boards. If you're not in favor, then obviously it stops here, so.
So we'll move on to?
We'll go to the selectmen tomorrow night. We are scheduled to be.
Advisory committee following my step.
The advisory committee will follow at 20:00, 7:30. Yep, so.
Now, we should do it in two steps, two motions.
No.
You already have the, at one of the other meetings, you already voted to go forward with the wording. The warrant doesn't have to change the wording itself because it just says to appropriate that much money. It's just an explanation of where the funds are coming from.
We did speak to Frank Sblane on the warrant, actually. Randy had had a conversation with him. And the one thing that, you know, Randy and I, when we had our discussion is, the one thing. thing you can do with a warrant is you can reduce the rent value, but you can't increase it.
Right.
We're greatly reducing what we're asking for on the financial side. And the warrant article, which Randy actually had crafted most of it in the original part, was actually very well-worded because it left a lot of things open for options. You know, raise and appropriate, you know.
Transfer.
Transfer or whatever. So it's like everything was covered in, and Frank did review it, and he seems to be comfortable with this.
Oh, excellent. It's really a vote to approve going forward as we understand the funding approach now because tomorrow night, we will be going to the board of the selectmen for the seven o'clock. Any one of you would like to go and represent? It's not a posted meeting, obviously, for you, but they, I'm sure, would like to know if you are in support of moving forward with this approach. So.
I'll make a motion to move it forward, to have it presented to the selectmen, and Frank to go before the town.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor? Three, zero, zero.
Is that enough?
I think I feel more comfortable with it specifically that we were looking to raise to appropriate from the overlay surplus, the $125,000.
And the funds from the high school capital project.
Right, and the funds from the capital, yeah. They agree.
Did you get that, Wendy?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make that motion that Bill just suggested.
We want the wording correct.
To appropriate $125,000 from the overlay surplus as well as the.
$75,000.
Well, you can't vote on that.
Transfer, to be a transfer from the overlay surplus.
Correct.
Transfer. Transfer, and then.
To utilize the $1 million.
Utilize the high school renovation bond proceed balance of $1 million.
And the revolving.
And the revolving.
High school apartment building.
It's teamwork.
Isn't this unusual situation? Because usually, there isn't a town in school requiring votes, kind of all over the place, for a project that everybody seems to collectively own.
I think what I'm most comfortable with is that ultimately, it'll come to the town floor, and that's where it'll be decided. And that's where it should be decided because it's a huge commitment for all of us to forge ahead and keep doing what we're supposed to be doing at the school. And do they want it or don't they?
I also want to thank Randy and Bill for working together and coming up with this because obviously.
Oh, it probably took them 10 minutes.
Do they need to, just to make sure, so they, there's a new.
We need a second on that motion.
A new, more specific vote.
I need a two-second.
Okay.
And a vote.
Yeah, all those in favor.
All those in favor. Three, zero, zero.
That was painless.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
And the people will speak.
Happy to have you.
Thank you, Randall.
Do try to be.
The high school's fighting. Are we done?
We are done.
Any other matters?
Any others? Happy Thanksgiving. Yes, just happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
I have to say, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Katie.
Did you get that?
Can I, before you say, good night, whatever, I do want to say, the IGO Taylor WBIIT auction was Friday night, and it was a wonderful event. Want to thank all the parents from the three elementary schools who worked so hard and they fundraised, or so much work goes into that, the hundreds of gifts and prizes that are donated, it was simply amazing. And the girls' heel-taki banquet yesterday, the banquet brunch, was quite lovely as well, so I want to congratulate them on a wonderfully successful season. And was just happy to be there and see all the things that they accomplished. It was a great season for them.
Great. Thanks. Okay.
Make a motion, Charlie.
Did either of you want to say anything?
I don't worry.
No? Okay. I wanted to say something for a minute. No? No? Okay. All right. Okay, so I need the motion.
Ten seconds.
Okay. All in favor?
Good.
Meeting adjourned.